Good evening. And welcome to two thousand and twenty-three. All of the hustle and bustle up here, it's as if we hadn't done this before. Uh, but welcome to two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, while we are a little disheveled, we are glad to be here. We're glad to serve you tonight, and we look forward to a wonderful, wonderful meeting. Notice is hereby given, uh, City of Lamarck, excuse me, City Council regular agenda of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Notice is hereby given that the City Council of the City of Lamarck, Texas will conduct a regular meeting on January ninth, beginning at six o'clock P. M. in the council chambers at eleven oh nine B Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas, as well as via video conference hosted through Zoom. In accordance with section five, five, one dot one, two, seven, B of the Texas Local Government Code, the presiding officer and the quorum of the Lamarck City Council intend to be and will physically be present at eleven oh nine V Bayou Road, Lamarck, Texas. This location will be open to the public, and the meeting will be broadcast at this location on channel sixteen and via YouTube. The council will meet for the purpose of considering the following agenda. The meeting has been called to order. Kiara, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember District A, present. Councilmember District B, present. Councilmember District C, present. Councilmember District D, present. And Mayor.
Present. Kiara, would you also allow us to understand, uh, what is going on with our city attorney tonight?
Um, yes, he, would you like to speak?
Yes, um, hey, how are y'all? Um, so I am appearing virtually out of an abundance of caution, given that I tested positive for COVID nineteen last week. Um, out of an abundance of caution and respect for, um, the citizens, I just, um, decided to appear virtually for that reason, so.
Good deal. We just wanted to make sure that people understood what was happening. Let's move on now to our invocation and pledge. I understand Pastor Wyndham is here, uh, from Resonate Church and also one of the, uh, chaplains of our, uh, Lamarck Police Department. Is that correct? Pastor Wyndham will lead us in our, uh, invocation, uh, this evening.
Let us pray. Lord, we give you thanks for these moments that you've given us. How you blessed us, God, to be here together, present with one another and present with you. But we know that in your great providence, Lord, that you desire to watch over this time that we have together, because there is no wisdom but yours, and there is no love except that that comes from you. So, Lord, I pray that you would lead and guide these proceedings. God, we confess how great need for you during these times and these moments. We confess, Lord, that there are times when we look to our own way and we lead on our own understanding. And we know, God, that this is not pleasing in your sight, and it is not productive in our efforts. God, will you have mercy on us this evening? May these proceedings be filled with your wisdom, filled with your love, filled with your guidance, so that what we call productive tonight would be your will. We pray all of these things in the name that is above every name. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember Carlson, would you do this in place?
I pledge allegiance to the law.
We have, uh, three presentations or proclamations tonight.
It would be in honor of Martin Luther King Jr., Officer of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck, proclamation, where Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all. The mayor has recognized that he did liberally live upon common cause, and where Dr. King's teachings continue to guide and empower the nation when addressing challenges within our community. So, in season of hope, for a day when all people might claim their riches and freedom, I am superior yet, whereas the King holiday service that was nineteen ninety-four. Designation, third Monday on January is the National Day of Voluntary Service, as it has been, as it has been since prime means, of Americans to serve their neighbors and communities on this day, whereas the King's Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for citizens come together to strengthen society, and whereas in two thousand and twenty-three, celebrate the sixtieth anniversary of Dr. King, mentioning a past hearing speech, as a reminder, uh, that as a nation, we must face current challenges, staying strengthened, because it has been an interminational visit by Dr. King, now being resolved at the City of Lamarck, uh, City Council, urges everyone in the community to engage in public service and promote nonviolent social care. Where the Dr. King's yet unfinished movement for equality for all, now therefore, we the mayor council by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, hereby proclaim January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Martin Luther King Jr. Day, uh, in the City of Lamarck, and we hereby urge all citizens to participate, uh, in celebration of Dr. King's fighting legacy, testimony where within my hand and seal of the city of Lamarck, the ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three, to be mayor. Give a round of applause for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Human trafficking prevention month. The person willing to support, follow. What is your name?
Duena Boswell-Lowell.
And you already?
Boswell-Lowell.
Good dear, you're welcome. Uh, whereas, Officer of the Mayor of the City of Lamarck, proclamation, whereas the United States was founded upon the principle that all people are created with enabled, enabled, enabled rights and freedoms, added the thirteenth amendment to the Constitution, making slavery legal, and whereas human trafficking is a risk crime, denying its dignity and fueling organized crime in modern days of claiming here to forty million victims worldwide and found in the United States, most often in the form of sexual assault, forced labor, labor, and voluntary servitude and debt bond. And whereas even though awareness of this crime is wrong, human trafficking intends to go unreported due in part to the isolated nature and lack of awareness about its implications. And whereas advocates for such, advocates such as the Boswell-Lowell, work to break through these reported barriers through education and their practice, representing not only victims, but human trafficking, but domestic violence and enslavement as well. And whereas National Human Trafficking Awareness Day, which is January the eleventh of each year, the Department of Homeland Security initiates its Wear Blue Day campaign as an act of awareness, education, and solidarity for those who have been affected by international violence. Now being resolved, that the Lamarck City Council urges everyone in the community to rely on vigilant, report sufficient bacteria, and working together in trafficking, all forms of abuse. Now therefore, he the mayor, uh, and the City Council by virtue of the authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, to hereby proclaim the month of January, twenty-seven, for human trafficking prevention. The City of Lamarck, to give our urge all citizens to participate in the Wear Blue Day campaign on January the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Testimony where within my hand and seal of the City of Lamarck, Texas, this ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three, be real mayor. Let's give a round of applause to human trafficking prevention. Ma'am, you certainly have a floor, uh, to for any remarks you might want to give us as far as human trafficking prevention month or anything.
Okay, so the biggest thing to know is that you should have actually the number one city for human trafficking. And that's kind of scary to me. We're watching that back door. So just educating yourself and making yourself aware of how traffickers actually come into our lives. Um, statistics say that the first contact that a pastor makes who were a victim, because of the levels of those parents, really need to be making sure we know more children are hanging out with what they're doing online, because a lot of these traffickers are now approaching them via online, social media sites, emails, and all our schools without providing laptops for children, so making sure that they really, as parents, will watch more of them. I think you'll really accept. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Again, let's give a round of applause. Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Are there any persons representing the law enforcement community here tonight? There's one. What's your name, sir? Come on. Y'all know Chief Ramon Largard, who is our police. Welcome, Chief. Officer of the Mayor for the City of Lamarck Proclamation, where at any given time, there are approximately eight hundred thousand sworn law enforcement officers serving communities across the United States. And whereas the Office of the Lamarck Police Department served in for that approximately ninety thousand residents of Lamarck, which there. And whereas the two thousand and fifteen Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, raised amid riding school meetings of law enforcement and concerns of police brutality, who pay tribute to the men and women who served their community in honor. And whereas the members of Lamarck Police Department were entitled to safeguard the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Lamarck, putting their lives on the line by confronting unspeakable dangers without hesitation. And whereas through the hardworking dedication of the Lamarck Police Department, their award-winning community police service, and support from the citizens, there has been significant reduction in crime over the last year. Now being resolved, that the Lamarck City Council urged everyone in the community to honor local law enforcement laws for their dedication and hard work protecting citizens, businesses, property, and visiting visitors to the city. And now therefore, with the mayor and the City of Lamarck, by virtue of our authority vested by the City of Lamarck, Texas, to give our proclaiming January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. The City of Lamarck, to give our urge all citizens to show their support for local law enforcement agencies, and testimony where within my hand and seal of the City of Lamarck, on this ninth day of January, two thousand and twenty-three, to be mayor. Again, let's get around the clock. Let the record play. There are men and women of our law enforcement community here tonight, and we honor them. We thank them for their service. I believe they will be a part, uh, of the order of service tonight. And, and or later, I guess maybe an introduction and some awards. Uh, but, but we want to recognize that you're here also for this Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Chief, you have a spot.
Thank you very much. Yes, I like, I didn't want to say we are, but I have to worry about if they go to bring something to citizens. I'll be appreciating stuff. I got a blue there to be for next three weeks. Same, same with you. We appreciate that.
All right, y'all are gonna have to warn me when JB is shooting his camera. So many times in society, uh, there are reasons for us to get spooked in situations like that. Thank goodness it was just JB. Yeah, all right. Uh, new officer introduction. Uh, Chief Argon, we want to bring you forward because I believe we have two new officers that you're introducing tonight. All right, good deal.
We've had two new officers here, uh, Mandela Mosley, goes by Della. He graduated the Lone Star Community College. We graduated in December. We picked him up officially about COVID twentieth, and okay, so he has a can-do attitude. And he's a man of my heart, because he loves community policing, and he can't wait to start. So with that, uh, glad to have you aboard. Del, want to say a word to? Okay, Delo's, uh, in transportation driving truck for major truck companies for five plus years and decided to be a cop. And when I went there, his graduates, ten of them, uh, several of them said they were interested in coming aboard, so he's kind of an advisor or advertisement for us. So thank you, Delo. To his right is Joshua Peterson. Joshua was came from us, came to us from the, uh, Gales County, yes. So he was there nine years, worked in the detention center. And he said he wanted to work patrol. And again, Joshua is very interested in community policing, and I guarantee you we'll be doing that soon later. So with that said, uh, Joshua, say a couple of words.
I'm sorry, if you're here, go forward to your part.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen.
All right, chief, don't go, don't go far. Item four, three is a police excellent award. Chief Argon.
We have Lieutenant Gandy's gonna, uh, say a few words about this award. Just want to mention Dana Thomason here. She is, uh, been with us little five years. This lady was a, a diver, you know, like a water diver for a while, and, uh, she's very well fit, and I want to tell you she's very productive. So with that, Lieutenant Gandy, would you comment on her award?
We, uh, we don't always do a great job of honoring our officers when they do something excellent. Uh, so we definitely want to change that in the upcoming future. Um, recently, back in November, uh, it, it was on the, uh, the first really frigidly cold night that we had. Uh, we had a small child, uh, nine years of age. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, seven years of age that had been missing. Uh, by the time we found him, had been missing for nine hours. And, uh, into, uh, it was probably about one or two in the morning when we actually found him. Um, for the police department, anytime we have a missing child or a missing elderly person that's endangered or anything like that, it's kind of all hands on deck. So we did have a lot of, a lot of officers come in. Uh, in particular, Officer Thompson came in on her, on her, uh, time off, uh, responded and was able to locate the child hiding in some bushes. It's a area that had been searched prior. Uh, her diligence was able to save this child. Like I said, it was that first really frigid night of the, uh, of the year. So, and that child was exposed to the elements for a good nine hours. So we're very proud of her, and we just want to recognize that, uh, that excellent work that she did.
Mayor. Good job. Good job. Officer Thompson, did you want to say something?
I just want to take a moment to thank, uh, the folks that are here with us, uh, concerning the Human Trafficking Month as well as, uh, National Law Enforcement Day. Um, as a sign of our unity, we have, uh, uh, colored lighting at both our library and our city hall. That's why it is, uh, lined in blue. We will make sure that we share our sentiments and our thoughts with all of you. Uh, and that is one of the first signs of community building that we're gonna have. In the future, we'll make sure that we correspond those colors with all the themed events that we've got going on and, uh, actual recognitions. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Again, uh, to Officer Thompson, uh, on behalf of the entire City Council, job well done, job well done. Thank you for your service. Uh, let's move now to citizens' participation, limited to three minutes. Comments from the public will be heard at this time. Any person with city-related business who signed up may speak to council, limited to three minutes. Uh, if you wish to speak to, uh, council, give the mayor or the presiding officer your full name, your address, the item you wish to speak about. Compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city may not deliberate on comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed, and personnel matters should be addressed to the city manager during normal business hours. If you are visiting with us via phone, you can press star six to mute and unmute yourself to speak. If you are visiting with us via Zoom platform on a smartphone, tablet, or computer, you may, uh, press the microphone, uh, icon at the lower portion of your screen to mute and unmute yourself to speak. And if you are attending in person, you may approach the podium to my left when your name is called and to your right, giving, uh, this council your name and your address, and you will be entitled to three minutes to speak. Kyle, are there any persons online wishing to speak? There are no persons online wishing to speak. We'll move to, to those persons in the audience. And the first person is Mrs. Charlotte Westerlich. Welcome, Ms. Charlotte. Welcome, Ms. Charlotte. Name and, and, and address, ma'am.
Um, I talked to the secretary, and she suggested that I had to come to you all and ask for this. And it's no reflection on our casey. But if we have someone that's from my district, Dee, thank you. I thought I was loud.
Three, uh, eight twenty-five shady lane for the record.
I'm sorry.
That, that's okay. Go ahead. I got you. I got you.
Um, I would like to, um, ask that we let people that live in our district run for our, run in our district because they know our district. They know our, the people in our district. But if there's no one running in our district, it's okay to have someone from the outside. That's my request, and I'm, I don't know if I need to make a motion for that or not. But if I do, I will. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is I, I miss getting the news from Lamarck. Uh, y'all used to send out a little pamphlet telling us what was going on. And if I remember correctly, we got a grant for infrastructure. I may be wrong. It's been a while. Um, couldn't that infrastructure apply to our water problem that we have now? That's the question that I wanted to bring up. Um, I had one more thing.
Sandy, what was the other one? Do you know?
My daughter is my secretary. Um, I appreciate our police. I've had to use my house, and they were much of a big help. And I want to thank them all tonight for being here and, and their service. Um, another problem that we had on New Year's Eve. I had fireworks and gunshots from seven o'clock till twelve thirty. They kept you awake, particularly for people like myself who didn't go out and party. I guess that's it. Thank you. I appreciate y'all listening. I appreciate y'all's help.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Charlotte, uh, Mr. Rick is our Public Works Director. He is in the back, uh, and a lot of the questions you've had about infrastructure and things of that nature, he might be able to fill you in on some of the latest things that have been happening. But there are some exciting things that are happening from an infrastructure standpoint, uh, that, that we need to get you, uh, abreast of. And so he's in the back. Rick, would you wave? Would you visit with Ms. Charlotte? Uh, let me, let me back up. Rick, don't do that. Stop. Would you ask Rick to visit with Ms. Charlotte, please?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do in open.
Okay. Very good. Uh, let's move now to Mr. Bill Pritchard.
Bill Pritchard, twenty-four, sixteen Newman Road, Lamarck. Uh, we have still having the same problems with sewer. Uh, within the last few months, three times, we couldn't use it. It backs up into our houses, so I tell the neighbors, just open the taps. It's either going in your house or you open the taps on the side and it goes out, it goes to the ditch, it goes to the bayou, and then it goes to the bay. Uh, this has been happening, and I know Rick's trying his best. Uh, I don't know how many bonds you got or what you have for infrastructure, but we've got a problem with the sewer on Newman Road. And it's just, uh, in my neighbor's yard, and he's here tonight. He's gonna talk. It's in his yard again, so he's right next door. So it's, I guess Rick's gonna clean it up, but I don't know when. Also, my neighbor, she couldn't be here. She lives at twenty-four, twenty. She built the house three years ago. The city ran a water line. They tried to run it way onto the road. The machine broke, so they run it just about on top of the road. It's just barely under, tore the street up. She's got two big potholes. She's been trying to get it fixed, and she's been there. She's been there three years. It's a mess. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Richard, I want to say this right. Chit, Chittam? Chittam?
Yes, sir.
Welcome, sir. Name and address.
Richard Chittam, twenty-four, oh, four Newman Road, Lamarck. I'm right beside Bill. Hey, good. Caesar's behind me, but we've been having the same problem with the sewer. It's usually our house is the worst and has been. We've lived there for eight years. Um, the toilets would back up, but never came up into the house, never had to open or clean it out or anything to resolve the problem until about two years ago is when it really changed. Whenever it rained hard, it shot up so hard into our shower. Within a minute, we had sewer all in our floor everywhere. So now we have to open our cleanout when it rains hard. Otherwise, it backs up in our house. We've called Health District. We've called everybody else. I know y'all are aware of the problem. But I just want to praise Rick Siller. Rick has been excellent. Every time I've called, he's called me back, no matter what time of night, in the morning, no matter what. I can't say much for his director. I ain't knocking her down, but, uh, not so much so. So that's pretty much all I got to say. I appreciate y'all very much.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, just point of information. Yes, sir. The, the challenges that, um, Lamarck has on its sewer system have existed prior to, uh, probably my even being born. Okay, and so let's just say it's been a while. And, um, we've, uh, even on my street, Duro, which is crossed, same thing. Mine backs up into my shop, and it happened with the recent rainfall. So ultimately, by way of information, there is, and I, I keep mentioning that your mayor keeps, we need to do a better job of communicating the, the timeline in terms of the, um, the, the pumps, the additional pump stations, uh, and, um, but fundamentally, the problem is our system as it exists now gets overwhelmed by the amount of rainwater that's coming in, and then it comes up.
We, Mr. 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 Chittam, what, 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 what we're getting into is a dialogue, which means we're starting to deliberate, which means we're starting to violate the Open Meetings Act. Um, and so, uh, uh, definitely Mr. Garcia can direct, uh, Rick to visit with you on grant awards and things of that nature, but the council can't go any farther than this. But there are some exciting things that will alleviate those problems that you all have just described. We just can't talk about it tonight. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rashad Loftus. Welcome, Mr. Loftus. Name and address as always.
Good afternoon. Rashad Loftus, three oh nine Johnson Street. I want to, um, comment on I want to um comment on the uh item on the agenda, the uh rental registration. I see y'all have it here for discussion and possible action to repeal that. And I personally think that that is a bad idea. I spoke with uh Kathleen, and she was telling me that that rentals uh registration program funds uh code enforcement in several capacities. So by taking that away, we're essentially taking money out of our own pockets. So maybe I want to rethink that. Perhaps some people are complaining because they don't want to pay. I probably don't wouldn't want to pay either, but if it's helping the city, we probably need to keep that. We already short on money around here. So y'all might want to really consider if we're going to take that away. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loftus. I am six now. Let's see uh acceptance and approval of minutes. We'll take all three. Twelve nineteen twenty twenty-two special draft minutes. Uh twelve twelve twenty twenty-two regular draft minutes, twelve twelve twenty twenty-two special draft minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item seven resolution unless otherwise specified.
Oh, there was not a second.
We didn't do a second.
I'll give a second. Okay.
I'm sorry. Do it again, gang. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
The second.
I second.
Thank you, Casey. Are there any uh additions or corrections? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, council. Uh item seven resolutions. Unless otherwise specified, the city manager is authorized to execute all necessary documents upon final approval by the city attorney. Seven one, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero 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 one. Calling for the general election to be held May sixth, two thousand twenty-three to elect one council member for District B and one council member for District D, each for a three-year term. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item seven two, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero 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 two regarding entering into a contract with the Galveston County Clerk. The Galveston County Election Officer for the general election to be held on May sixth, two thousand twenty-three and possible runoff election on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Is any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item seven three, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero 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 three is accepting the Baker Ripley Agreement with low-income housing water assistance program. Caesar.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Uh this item was uh one that we learned about when we had our consultants from Waterworks come forward. Uh this is a uh agency that allows that provides assistance to certain folks through uh federal funds. Uh they are funded through a grant agency. This is one agency that some of our residents have reached out for assistance. Um in order for us to receive payment from them, the the company, uh Baker Ripley themselves requires a agreement uh to be in place. This is that agreement.
Very good. Council, do we have any questions for Caesar?
Uh my main question is how do eligible citizens get connected to this most effectively? And I would love to hear hear from Venetia. Please.
Venetia is our utility billing.
Utility billing supervisor.
Very good. Welcome, Venetia.
Hi. What was your question?
Well, how do eligible citizens learn about this and how do they get connected to it?
Learn about it, I will say um a big thing, social media, and then when they call our office, we our staff just recommends um assistance for them. Uh if they are behind, we have a lot of accounts that are like ninety days past due. Um which we haven't won a payment plan, but we do offer these kind of services.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons why I take this to council because this agency was one of the ones that we don't have a contract with. Um that can allow us to start paying for their those accounts.
So most directly, it would be through you guys when someone is saying they have a problem or you know someone has an issue. You could say, here is a resource for you.
Absolutely.
But actually, you go to TWC. They actually
Right, you don't do it, but I'm saying you can give them the knowledge of this, right?
Oh, yeah.
But the city of Lamarck is not then helping them fill it out. It is then on this company.
Oh.
Cool.
But for residents, residents can go because Baker Ripley, they actually had they office out of TWC in Texas City. So you actually have to fill out that form there.
Okay.
And that that was one of the issues that uh our city did not have that service for utilities, but thanks to you and and that says our now now they have that option. Because it wasn't at first, but you they can come to the city, the city can tell them about it, but they actually house once a week on Wednesdays at TWC, Baker Ripley.
And just to further that point, too, one of the things that we've learned through this process, if we are scouring to see if there's other agencies that provide similar service that might do it in different areas that we may not know of. And then if so, then we'll bring those forward at the beginning.
Great. Yeah, absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, council? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven four, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero 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 four approving a final plat application of ocean. Lamarck being uh one point five four three four acres situated in the WK Wilson League Abstract two oh eight Lamarck, Texas Galveston County. Caesar.
Thank you, mayor. Um Kathleen is available for question, but this is a uh plat um that we are bringing before you for um with the intent uh for your viewer approval or subsequent denial. Any questions you may have?
Council, do you have any question?
I have a for clarification purposes, this consolidation, uh Kathleen?
Yes, sir. This is for the Ocean Carnival.
Oh, it's over there on the B. Ah yeah, no, no, you got me. That's a dude. Okay, yeah. All right, very good. I understand now.
No further questions.
Yeah.
Well, we will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Item seven five, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero 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 five approving a replat of all lots one, two, thirteen, and fourteen and the east one forty-four feet of lot three and east one hundred and forty-four feet of lot twelve of block five and a part of Eleventh Street in the city of Lamarck, Texas, being one point three zero four six acres in Division O of the Cook and Stewart subdivision in the John D. Moore League in Galveston County.
Woo.
Kathleen. Can you excuse?
The and this is uh maybe Mary Potem was getting a little bit ahead. This is off of Main Street. Uh this is where they're trying to uh put the actual lots together. Uh Kathleen's available. Should you have any questions? But this is at one one zero three Main Street and the unitization, if you will, of uh all these lots.
Yes, sir. They all these there's all these lots were purchased, and they went through the process of doing the title searches, the surveys, rightaways, easements, and abandonments and everything. And they want to replat this into one lot. This is Zone General Commercial. So when they do decide what they are going to do there, then they will come back to us and present what plans they have for that property, and that's where we'll say yes or no. It's got to be whatever can fall into the C one general commercials on him.
Okay. There are no no plans as of yet. This is
No, sir. They they're not required to have them at the plating process.
Okay.
Unless it's a subdivision or something like that.
Very good. Any questions for Kathleen?
So previously, were there houses on these smaller lots?
There may have been.
Well, but there were there are none now.
No.
Good.
No. There wasn't an abandoned easement, but that was all done many, many years ago.
Very good. Uh any further questions? Hearing now, we will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
The second?
I apologize. I didn't bring the fight for your sign. I'm so sorry.
That's fine.
We'll have it in her office tomorrow.
That that's fine. That's fine. Uh entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution uh seven uh six, resolution number letter R dash two zero two three dash zero 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 six authorizing the submission of Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Recreational Trail Grants Application and authorizing the city manager to act as the city's executive officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the city's participation in the Texas Parks and Wildlife Program. Uh basically, Caesar, would you help us to understand where these uh trails would go?
Yes, mayor. Um this the trails uh that we're applying for funding for would be at Hound Bay Park. Uh the idea would be to have close to a one-mile trail um at the perimeter of the actual main part of the park.
And this would be for folks that would like to exercise and things of that nature.
Yes, this is just for the trail. Um it might provide for benches, trash cans, but no no recreational activities beside the trail itself.
Good deal. Council, do you have any questions for Caesar?
Is the Parks Board aware of the grant that the city's going after?
Yes, they are. They are in support, and we've been in locked up with them on on bringing this forward.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing now, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing now, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eight, new business items presented to council for the discussion, the possible action. Item eight, one Boards and Commissions Handbook. Uh I think it's uh it is proper for uh Caesar to uh give us uh his commentary on the handbook uh and for us to, if we have questions, to handle those questions before we get into any action. Uh because a question might sway uh the action of the council. Caesar.
Certainly, mayor. Um at uh previous meeting, we had a discussion about bringing forward uh some form of handbook to give us some type of uh guidance as how we deal with our boards and commissions. I want to commend the city clerk and uh Gus for uh their assistance uh in preparing this document. This is a working draft that's brought to you in its form for final review or for any type of uh comments, so we can drive this forward. Uh the intent is to create this into a final draft that we present for this year. Obviously, we're going to fine tune this thing. This is going to be a living document that obviously we will continue to uh address, and I will uh ask if Gus or Care have any comments.
Um not particularly, just that. Document has been in progress for a little bit of time for quite a while now, and there were a few previous drafts that actually went before boards and commissions to get their input on as well, so um they were in some aspects included in this process.
You're saying uh previous like attempts to put this together had brought this to different boards.
Kind of the original rough draft that we kind of came up with went to them, and they gave us feedback, and so this is kind of a culmination of best practices and other what other cities have done around us as well as across the state um following up with legal, making sure that we're following state guidelines as well as input from different boards and commission members. Great.
Good, Joe. Yeah, good.
So you're you're entertaining questions as
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're opening opening it up for questions.
I'm I'm it's a draft. And I've read it over uh. One of the areas that kind of stands out to me, and it's something that I'm doing with all my groups, but with Lamar included, I go through our our webpages. And one thing that I noticed is that this felony background, I I think it's page two. It'd be helpful to the future on drafts, by the way, whoever to put pages on here. And um so uh I think it's just I think it's the second page. This is felony background. And I'm uh need some clarification there. Right now, we don't, if I'm if I'm wrong, correct me, but but we don't require or do any sort of felony background checks on our on our appointees to boards. Is that accurate?
No, sir. We do not currently.
We don't. We don't do that. But now we're going to do this according to this with people that are are what volunteering for for what? That are just volunteers? Or is this extended intended extended to to members now of our boards and commissions?
One of
You're either we do or
or Gus or whoever.
So so the idea would be that it is at the will of the council as to what direction you want to have on this. Uh the thought process was it's come up in conversation, so we want to include it for discussion, and at that point, we'll take whatever direction needed.
Uh just from from my own experience, the the only item that when there's an application, I believe our application says this already, have you ever been convicted of felony? I think that's on there, correct, on the application?
I I'd have to confirm. I know that we have varying applications. Um one of the things we're trying to do is be more consistent because different
Well, I I I think that when we sign up for public office, there is that question on that on that form. There's that question.
Yeah, yeah.
So 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 uh thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Care.
Well, so to know that it's not on here, huh?
No. No, it's
Yeah.
My my only how can I explain this? The number one concern with regard to a person that's been convicted of felony is working with youth. Have you been convicted of a felony that involves a uh where you're a registered sex offender? Okay, or alternatively, if if yes, have you have you completed the terms of your of your uh sentence or probation or or things of that nature? Or the flip side of that is that we just get rid of the whole issue and continue with what we're doing, right? That's
I'm more inclined to do that, to be honest with you. I feel like it's not an issue in in my opinion currently. I do think that obviously, we all have concerns about anyone who a registered sex offender and anyone who's involved in crimes that would be direct, I think that would alarm anybody working with kids, but I think we have the I think we have all of the power we need to question that at any point if something were to come to light. I mean, we have a lot of power as council when it comes to if there's a question about a board or commission member, we can call for for something to be done. I agree with you. I'm not so sure that section needs to be in here unless there was a reason it was in there based on the feedback you got from the boards and the commissions. Uh if not, then I feel like it further complicates things that don't need to be complicated. It's just my opinion.
Yeah. You can be a teacher in the state of Texas with a felony. You just can't be a violent felony. So that's that's, I mean, so we may cut. Could you have people who have felonies due to too many tickets or you know, too many, but they're non but they're nonviolent felonies, and I think that gets that we get into a real gray murky area, and then who who pays for the backgrounds of of the volunteers?
We we would.
We would pay for the volunteers, because right now, there's there's not a DPS verification for volunteers at all. So if we so not for boards and commission, but
I believe city volunteers do.
Yeah, but if you're implementing a felony uh background uh as far as restricting that, then you would have to run one, so that would be costly. For the city.
It would be a costly association.
Other than that, my only other uh there was this that was the same thing that jumped out to me, what Joe said. I I would suggest I don't find it to be necessary. Um but also the other thing I was just gonna say, there's a few areas, this is nitpicky, but like that the that the titles are all in caps versus other times when they're not all in caps, just like cleaning up the aesthetics of it, but other than that, I it looks good to me.
It's uh great. Continue. This is confusing, this whole this draft is confusing because I think we're intending it to be applicable to both volunteers. Is that correct? No, and members of boards and commissions? No, and members of boards and commissions? The
It's just boards and committees.
The intent right now, this, with this wing at it would be just boards and commissions.
And, and when you have your, um, what, what is it you're gonna have? You're gonna have like a
What orientation?
Orientation? Are, are, are we including volunteers in the orientation as well or not? No?
No, sir. Not at this time.
Okay. So, so like, once again, I don't know what quest, what page this is. It might be the second to the last. It says limitation of liability. And then you speak up and I guess this speaks to Casey's point, there's just verbiage that needs to be cleaned up in this draft. It speaks of the board, the board referencing as if this, this were our board, right? As so my, my suggestion is that we, we can have another meeting, what, later in the month? Is that we table this, get, get this cleaned up? And then come back and revisit it. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, the questions, the comments?
Just
Whoa, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Michael. You wanted to do what, Joe?
Table.
Table.
Well, well, okay, let's continue discussion and then we'll, we'll, we'll look at whether or not we want to. Go ahead.
But just for clarification, are we because are we keeping the sex offender thing in there or not? Or are we just overlooking it? Because I have issue with that.
It's not in there.
Yep.
Right, it's not in there, but I know you guys were saying, you know, let's overlook felonies. But I have an issue with that because of the amount of kids that we have around here.
I, I guess what I'm saying is not to overlook it, but currently, you know, so, so what? If I understand correctly, the creation of this handbook is to try and put in one place
Right.
All of the answers that
Right, but on our application, if we, I'm sorry, cut you off.
We don't have it on our application.
I think we need to add that.
I mean
Because, because I'll tell you what, if one of my kids gets in trouble or someone else's kids get in trouble, that's not gonna be a pretty day. I mean, and I don't want to take that liability.
I, I understand what you're saying. I mean, I think it's, it's kind of a hot button topic. I'm not trying to say that like, oh, let's not worry about, you know, sex offenses or those who have been, you know, uh, uh, found guilty of, of, of crimes.
That involve violent crimes that involve children.
But I think we're also conflating things a little bit, in my opinion, because I think there's a way that maybe it could be written. What I think this does is create a little more confusion. Because all these questions of, well, who's allowed to be there? What kind of felony? Anybody? When I would assume that most of us, what we want is anyone who has paid their debt to society to find ways to give back to their community, right? I think I, I would assume we all agree that not all felonies are the same. And that yes, there should be caution in when someone is appointed. But I think we have the power to maybe put different language in here that says, you know, at any time we are allowed to ask for, you know, a, a background check. You're agreeing to that. Um, or if something were to come up, because I mean, the fact of the matter is, no one on a board and commission, even the Parks Board is it, they're not being appointed to position where they are directly working with kids. Like, that's not what the, the boards and commissions positions are. There are certain boards and commissions that I agree do put you in contact more with, with certain communities, but I think we should just on the, in my opinion, we should err on the side of saying less here rather than saying more, because I think it makes it more confusing.
For clarification, just it sounds like we're gonna end up bringing this item back at a later date. Was the request to completely remove it or to restructure it to say that a board or commission member may be sub, may be subject to a background check, but it's not a requirement.
See, I don't, I don't see, see, uh, uh, I, I don't think that we should be doing background checks on volunteers in that way, because, because as a government, it could be uh, the perception can be bad. That somehow we are, we're using our power and authority to, to be invasive in people's lives. Now, I will say uh, that, and I perhaps, perhaps we can ask Chief Argon this. I do think that i- i- that on some of our boards, there is a need to protect our children. For example, if it is a Parks Board, uh, and there are, uh, registered sex offenders, if it is a library board, uh, and there are registered sex offenders. My question to you would be, uh, those registries are public knowledge, yes?
Yes, it's correct.
So, so there wouldn't be any need even in those cases to run background checks. What we would simply, and when I say we, not us as a council, but what our staff would simply have to be directed to do, uh, would be those persons that are applying to be on boards that would, uh, routinely or normally deal with children, that those processes would, they would check the child, the sex offender, a sex offender registry. Uh, and at that point, those persons would be disqualified and, and then I don't know the law, so I don't know if that's even some sort of violation. So maybe we would be responsible for turning those persons into you. You know, if they were trying to get on a board that they would work with children and they're not supposed to do that, maybe we refer that to you, but, but I don't, I don't know that we would be, we would necessarily need uh, at this point, a background check on our, on our citizens, um, even in that instance. Uh, um, but my point was this, the question that I had was would we be able to even identify sex offenders without, without background checks? And the answer is yes.
You can. You can sign up. Anyone can sign up on the DPS website and, and look at the sex offender list for our area. And it shows the charge and when it occurred, shows their pictures and shows their requirements. Uh, but you know, this is something, you know, this is good, this is good point, Mayor. Would we want to hire a high, we want to let, uh, select a person, let's just take an example. They're not a sex offender, but they've robbed three banks. They're a felon, uh, multiple felon, on and on and on. Would we want somebody like that to be serving the community? I, I think it's kind of, you know, it's question mark. We might want to talk to Gus and see what other cities are doing for these key positions. Because suddenly you have a person on, on, sitting there that's, you know, like I said, robbed three banks in another state. And they say, it comes up that, hey, you know, this guy's a bank robber and he's sitting there, you know, talking to our community. So you can't being that it's not a state's, how would you say, state requirement, like a teacher. They have to be checked by the NCIC system to, to see their, their record from day one to current. But these jobs, we can't do that because they're not, it's not under investigation or state law. But there's ways you can check it. We have a TLO system that we use. It's not like a, you know, the, through the federal system. And it shows everything they've done wrong. And that you can do, because we pay for it monthly, hundred sixty-five dollars. So if Gus says you can do the following, you might want to do that.
And, and I'm being honest with you and I don't want to start January. I don't want to start off with a debate, but I, I just have to, it, it's, it's pulling at me.
Yeah. We do that with our
Well, let, let me ask you this, though. Do you really think a three-time convicted bank robber i- is gonna apply for and be a part of the Parks Board? So that he or she can unfold this devious plan to rob us of seesaws? I mean, at some point, we have to let people pay their debt to society. I'll leave it alone.
I agree. I think that, again, I mean, I, just on a very cursory search, and I agree, obviously, this is gonna come back. And I think it would be good for us to maybe get an idea of what all the cities around us are doing. In my very cursory search, Galveston requires, there is a question about felonies. Dickinson and Texas City do not. So it seems like it's
It's by city, yes.
It's by city, in certain areas.
I see, but not on their main application, it's not on there. And nor is there anything on their website that says they're gonna ask for it. So it's very subjective, obviously. And I, again, I of course, I also agree with what you're saying, Michael, and that you clearly feel passionate about that. We want to make sure everyone is safe, but I also, a- and I also feel that I want people who have served their debt to society to be able to participate in our, in municipal leadership. They are part of our community. And, um, the end.
Yeah. Let me, let, say anyone. Let me jump in and, 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 and say to Kiara or to Gus, uh, thank you all for the work that you have done on this so far. It gives us, uh, uh, at least a a, an outline that we can, we can build on. Uh, I'm interested in the new member section. Uh, it talks, uh, a lot about the, uh, chairman, uh, the chairpersons and their responsibilities. Uh, one of the responsibilities, uh, that you are giving to, to the entire board is that they are uh, aware of Robert Rules of Order. But I believe that we really need to make it and a requirement that our chairpersons uh, have a basic working knowledge of Robert Rules of Order, because they are making decisions, they're taking votes. Uh, and we want to make sure that they have the proper motions, the proper seconds, the proper discussions uh, and everything, because again, at the end of the day, this can come back to us and it can, it can be an issue of, of liability. So I want to make sure that's in there and you wanted to respond.
Yes, sir. So that is one of the topics that'll be discussed at the annual orientation to which, uh, members are required to attend when their first appointment as well as each reappointment. So there will be continued education on that as the time goes on. So just kind of to let you see kind of what that
Do you have it in here?
Yeah.
Is it in here that it's a requirement to attend that training?
I do believe so.
Okay.
And, but, 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 what I want to drill down on, Kiara, is that there is a, there is a, a deeper responsibility for the chairperson. And even if it's a training that Caesar can put together, uh, um, or, or maybe we can find somewhere else. I think that there has to be
For them to have an additional
Even, even, even if it's, if it's some sort of mock training where they, because I've seen uh, as liaisons to some of these boards over the years, I've seen uh, boards and utter dysfunction, and it's through no fault of the, the members, their volunteers. It's because they haven't been trained. And so I think for the chair and the vice chair, there has to be at least some sort of mock training that, that they would be put in the position that they can understand how to implement and apply Robert's Rules of Order from a chairperson's perspective.
Okay.
So that we can get a handle on some of these meetings, again, through no fault of our volunteers. They just need more education and more training. Uh, and again, that's, that's something Caesar, that you might be able to just create. Uh, it's not, it's not, you know, uh, something that we need to get really deep in. It's just something we need to make sure that we are putting together to make sure that they're responsible. Um, the other thing I think that we needed to put in the orientation is the mission of those boards. Um, people are people are, are applying for the Parks Board or the Cemetery Board or Keeper of Mark Beautiful, uh, Commission. Uh, and they don't necessarily know what the mission of those boards are. And so they, when they go in, it takes them a while to understand the inner workings, the dynamics, the mission. So if we were to get them to, you know, at least some information on, this is the history of this board, this is what they've normally done, this is what they're doing now, right? Um, again, as much information as they can have, the more they'll be willing to serve and the easier their service will be. Um, lastly, in the Code of Conduct, um, it talks about some sort of moral standard, and that can mean a lot of things to a lot of people. Uh, it says at all time, conduct themselves to hi- to the highest moral standard, uh, the highest moral capacity. Um, I think we probably need to make sure that we understand what that means. Uh, and secondly, uh, I see a lot of reference to a social media policy and the, and the way that we conduct ourselves on social media, which is very important. Uh, but I, I think that we need to also, uh, speak to how we ought to conduct ourselves in person. Because there are things that, that, that can happen, we know throughout the, this country, uh, from personal confrontations, personal confusion and chaos that can be devastating to communities. And so we want to make sure that, that all of our members are respected and that their rights are protected. Um, you know, we want to, we want to, we want to make sure that's, that's something that we understand when we are part of our boards and commissions. We are expected to do. And that's all I have as far as feedback. Again, thank you all for, uh, the efforts that you all put. This is a great start.
Hey, Mayor, I got something else.
Go ahead, Michael.
Um, since this is coming back, is, can you get a like a price for what a background check would, would cost? Um,
I, I know that for us, um, and, and for our nonprofit, we run background checks specifically that are geared towards, uh, any violent crimes with children. Um, because of the nature, it's working in the schools and it's around forty dollars a person.
Okay. And okay, how many people do we have on boards? Do we know off the top of our heads?
May thirties, what's that?
So thirty times forty, that's twelve hundred. Okay. Appreciate it.
I'm sorry, didn't I just understand from the chief that we could do that with the service that you subscribe to already at no additional cost? The sixty dollars or sixty-five dollars a month, you said? On, on running checks?
We, it's called, uh, TLO by TransUnion. We pay a hundred sixty-five dollars a month. With the D O B and the S S N. It, it shows everything.
But it only
Well, would that be a, available to our?
You could, you could sign up for it. They asked for credentials. You know, you don't have to be a cop.
Okay.
But you could sign up, it's a fee and everything they get is legal. It'll show their rec- their record, driver record, everything.
But that's only in the state, right?
Uh, you check with Lieutenant Gandy on that. And I think it's really good to have. Now, my feelings is on this is, whatever the, if the, the city attorney states, you, we can look at certain things for certain jobs. We need to, because it's a duty that we have. We don't want to have people that are on there that we, we should know with real, simply that there's a, there's a, uh, you know, there's something wrong with that picture.
But Chief, I, I just have to, I, I'm sorry, I, I, I just have to push back on that a little bit. Wha- what are they gonna do, though? I mean, we're, we're gonna know, we're gonna know that they've done something.
We're gonna know, like
I, I get, I get, I get violent because I get a violent, um, past, because perhaps they are confrontations. There are conversations that board members have with one another, and you want to make sure that you're not putting other board members in danger. I can, I can wrap my head around why you would want to know that. I guess the other, the other question that I would have is outside of safety of other board members, why would that matter if folks have paid their debt to society? Uh, and they are trying to be productive members. Again, they're on volunteer boards, right? So that, that should suggest that they, something has happened that they've decided that they've, they've, uh, turned their life around, because you don't get rich uh, serving on a volunteer board in a town of nineteen thousand people.
Sure. I mean, so, somebody has twenty years ago, a felony, and you know, they've been doing all this good stuff, that, that's different, but it might have been just a year and a half ago. They haven't even proven themselves. That's something the city manager might look at, say, hey, you know, that's not the same as twenty-five years ago. So that's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay.
The TLO is just Texas, right?
Sir.
They'll just pull up the Texas, correct?
Yeah, that's, uh, the head of the state.
Right, but it won't show anything like the NCIC will.
It'll show nationally.
So it will show other
It will show nationally, the driver's history, the criminal history, their you know, assets, their bank accounts, bank, uh, you know,
Yeah, I don't
foreclosures, everything. It shows everything. But we're only looking for stuff like that, I guess.
Okay.
You know?
Okay, so, so, yeah, yeah, so, eh, okay, thank you. Any, any other, any other questions or comments?
Um, yeah, just, it's okay, no, it's okay. It's for Kira. Don't worry. Don't worry, Chief.
It's one for Kiera. She's in. You're good, you're good, Chief, thank you.
I was just gonna say, again, just aesthetics, like formatting wise, the section, oh gosh, I lost it. Um, oh, thank you. Or under general duties, it's just kind of hard to read. It's the one that's like referencing all the different sections that the duties of the committees are listed out. It just looks like it got pasted, you know, and did like a weird thing. Um, but it's weird enough, I wanted to point it out. And, um, then I would say, uh, I do agree with, um, Keith around, you know, writing codes of conduct is so strange. Um, and I think just looking at a couple of sample ones for other city councils would, or city these kinds of, I think would be good, so that it's more specific and less like moral conduct, like high moral conduct, because I could see that being a pain in a future municipal bodies, but, so, okay. Thank you. I think it looks great and I'm excited. I know this, man, has this been needed for, ever since I've been here. So, um, I'm excited that it's on its way.
There, it sounds like there will be, uh, some debate on background. So I would put those, uh, those sections last, so that if those sections fail, then you don't have to reshuffle your numbers. And so all, all of these things that you, you've heard that might be some contention, put those at the end. Thank you.
One last question I have. As far as attendance goes, I, did I overlook it? But who's responsible for doing the attendance? Is it the chairperson?
It is the staff liaison.
Okay, so the staff liaison.
Yeah. And I know that's an internal I know that's an internal policy, we can definitely include that in here, that the staff liaisons will be taking attendance at all of the meetings.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure that it's spelled out, who's responsible for it, because. I don't want the staff liaison to go, oh, chairman's responsible, chairman says no staff liaison. So people gotta be held accountable, so. Thank you.
And then, Mayor, Councilman Carlson's in part. Talked my mind a little bit, and I'd asked for the ordinance itself to be included with this item. Number one, I'm asking that we table, number one, but number two, I, I would ask. That we also probably need. To revisit the ordinance. With any changes that we make on this, this. Uh, this workbook or handbook, whatever we're gonna call it, right? And to that extent, I know Councilman uh, Carlton is interested in this. Uh, councilperson would call a visit in the past, and perhaps you consider appointing uh, an ad hoc committee of two. That will also revisit this so that there's consistency, right, and clearing up the. The challenges that we have in all of our, you know, quorum of amounts and things, and all our different commissions and boards, that's just what I.
I'm laughing because I, I. Casey, I don't think Casey wants anymore.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to join with Councilperson Carlson at the.
Michael, what do you think? You want to spearhead this?
Put me down, yep.
Okay. There it is. There it is. Are you gonna work with him, Joe?
Yes, sir.
We don't need any council action for that, uh, is it, does this? Casey, all, okay. We're good, so let's move, let's see if we can move past that, other than that, are we, are we willing, are we ready to table? I'll entertain a motion to table.
So move.
The second?
Second.
There is no discussion on table, all those in favor? Any opposed? It is table for a future and uh, until a future date, item eight-two. Rental registration, discussion, possible action, revocation of rental property application fee. I believe Councilmember Carlson, you put this on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Michael.
It was brought to my attention by some of my constituents that. If they own. For example, three houses, three rent houses, they have to pay four hundred dollars for. The three hundred, or each house is a hundred dollars, and then they have to pay an administrative fee of a hundred dollars, so that would be four hundred dollars. And I don't know if it got overlooked when we approved it before, but it was brought to my attention and I. I do have issues with that, with the administrative fee, because we raised the rent. The rental house rates for the additional houses, eighty dollars. So someone who has three houses, they're paying additional two hundred and forty bucks of what they, or they're about. So I don't think that we need to do a registration fee. Because we're already hitting them, I don't want to, I don't want to say hitting them, but we're already charging them a hundred bucks. For the actual rental.
The rental registration fee.
Right, but the application fee itself. Yeah, the administrative fee is a hundred dollars and I, it, I don't know if it slipped through our.
Yeah, I think, I, I think I, I got where you're going with it.
So that's why I brought it up, because I think we're doing the citizens wrong.
I, I think the, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Gus, I think the administrative fee might be uh, easier for us to, to amend. Than the, the ordinance, the fee uh, 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 outline in the ordinance?
Um, you know, e- e- what, either fee that's going to be amended is gonna require an ordinance um, associated with that. So.
Okay. Good, good.
Just for clarity, or Gus, when. The fee schedule that you worked on Kathleen, beautiful, right, we were. That, that work was very comprehensive, I recall at that time I did point out, out of question. With regard to the rental ordinance, whether the fees and, and there were so many of them in my poor eyesight. I didn't pick this up, I would have picked this up, but. I said, that's a separate. Visit that we have to make. And um, I'll go back and pull up the tape and stuff, but the response at that time according. Yeah, that was, just as you said, Gus, that was a separate ordinance that created those particular fees. So in order to change that ordinance, we would have had to come back and. Visit that ordinance, Gus, is that what you're saying? Not this, not this. All, all, all-inclusive change that we made on all the fees. But, but having said that, let me say, I also agree. The, as a landlord. The city of Lamarck or any municipality makes more money. Not from the hundred dollars or the thirty dollars or whatever the, the annual fee is. But it makes its money from. The. Taxes, the property taxes that are paid on the rental property where the homeowner does not have. A hu- a homeowner's exemption or any other exemption associated with that property. For example, I have a relative who has a rental house out in a planned subdivision. And uh, you know, that represents a whole lot of money, property tax-wise, based upon the appraisal of his property. Uh, to this, to the city, same thing of some other landlords that have more than one property. So that's where we get the greater amount of income. To the city versus the little. Hundred dollars or hundred dollars. I, I think the intent of the ordinance, and Keith, I think you, you brought about the ordinance, right? The intent was to provide us some sort of. Of registry, we had an idea of having your rental properties and to also require that they be maintained in some fashion. Have access to uh, a, a name of a person in the event that there was a fire that occurred at the property. Or some other emergency that occurred, I think that was the intent of the ordinance, so I understand what Councilman Car- Carlson is saying, is that. The, this, this fee that we're now assessing, I believe is, is probably something that we have to revisit, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, let, let me, let me say, the, the, the history of this ordinance, uh, uh. Yeah, is one I'm familiar with, because I was the one that brought this, this forward. Uh, and, and it was brought forward during, during the time that there was high crime rates in our city. Uh, a lot of those crime rates uh, were uh, ha- occurring in areas and, and, and. Uh, residences that were rental properties, those rental properties were not maintained properly. So the types of people that uh, lived in those properties were people that would be more inclined. Uh, to criminal activity, uh, so they were using these properties as basis of criminal operation. Uh, and so one of the things we were, we thought was that this might be a deterrent for crime, number one, number two. Every citizen in our community deserves to live in, in, in a place that, that is uh, standard. That's safe, and so this is where this, this came from. Uh, the fee associated with it uh, was always and only designed to. Pay for the code enforcement officer. That would ensure that these codes were followed, wasn't designed to make a bunch of money, wasn't designed to raise anything over than. Uh, that one person that would be, be responsible for making sure these codes were, were enforced. If we've gotten to a place that that's not happening, I think we do need to revisit uh, and go back to what the intent was. To, for the program to pay for itself.
I'd like to hear from Kathleen about if that's.
If you recall, Mayor, uh, Mayor and Council was very generous in twenty eighteen when you created this ordinance. Where you did not charge a fee, you waived the fee for every person that owned rental property in the city. But it still cost the city for the staff. To create this program and to follow up with it and send out all the information. Since then. We have charged a certain amount. And it's not covered the expenses, it has paid some up for code enforcement. But we've never covered the expenses to the point where we were gonna be able to do the rental inspections. Because at the beginning, we wanted people to get used to this, all the other cities have it, Austin has a major rental program. So now, when we raise the fees this time, it's because now it's time to do the inspections. Because other cities that have these programs, they do a rental inspection. It's not a complete inspection underneath the house and all this, but they do do it to make sure it's habitable and up to code. And these houses are being maintained by landlords. We've gone through the blight, this program helped with the blight. And that's when it was generated, we've gone through that, we've, we've cleaned out a lot of that, but now it's time to start doing that. And to, only way we can do inspections on rental houses now is to increase the fees. We have, to date, we've had five hundred and twenty. People register in the rental registration program with the new fees. We've had approximately twenty-five to thirty complaint. Camilla Holmes has a hundred and fifty-four rental homes. Single-family homes, they paid hundred dollars for each one of those homes. Those are fairly new, y'all remember when those went in? Not one complaint out of them, George Wood made no complaint. People that have these, several of these, of these homes, they've not complained because they know these fees are being raised in other cities. But be able to do what I think this program's intended for us to do. We have to raise the fees. Or all we're doing is registering rental properties. And taking staff time and postage and mailouts and everything else. And, and we're not getting anything from it. This, this raising these fees should provide for another code enforcement officer to do these. And the vacant building inspections and all these other inspections. That's the intention of it, it's my sure not making money.
Yeah, the, the thing is, the thing is this. We have to, we have to navigate that, in my opinion, we have to, we have to always navigate that with the, with the overriding issues of the country. And we are moving into what people believe is a recession. Uh, we know that we have dealt with inflation. Uh, and so with a recession and inflation and, and some of these other issues, uh, uh, taxation. Uh, I think we just have to be careful, I get what you're saying, we have to be careful in when we go about doing these things. And I think that'll be the, for me, the main issue.
Right, that, 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 that is a. Can I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, so I did receive some phone calls concerning the, the additional fees, meaning if you have five. Rental houses, the first one's a hundred, and the way it stands now, that the ones after that are twenty dollars each. But, but now we're pers, now we're proposing to go from all of them are a hundred dollars each.
The application fee or the admin fee, whichever you want to call it, it's, it's easier to explain sometimes to people. The rental application fee has always been a hundred dollars, always, that has never changed. The only difference was, was the per home or per apartment unit fee. That's what changed, the application fee never changed.
Right.
We did not increase that, we increased a single-family home. To a hundred dollars, that's because, how many apartments do you think, well, you know, there's a couple? That ri- we have in Lamarck that we're gonna have to inspect. We could probably handle the four or five apartment communities we have. Rental homes, that's where the majority of the rentals are. We can't go and inspect those when they register their, their, the rental home, we don't have the manpower to be able to go and do that. But raising the fee per single-family home does, that will provide that.
And I think that's the issue, I, I think the issue for people that have multiple homes. That, that twenty dollars going to a hundred dollars is the issue, so maybe we look at that, maybe just. Do it at fifty dollars rather than a hundred dollars.
No, I brought it up because the administrative fee is what I'm getting complaints about. They're okay, they're okay with the, everything jumping up eighty bucks. The additional houses, that's why I'm saying we need to.
The one thing that changed, though.
That's what people are upset about.
Uh, is that cost with having additional. Properties being going, because in the past, you only pay.
Went from twenty bucks to eighty, or a hundred.
To a hundred, so the complaints that I received were, was about that part, not the admin fee. So I guess you got one thing I've got.
They're confused, I think, when they're telling, talking to you, they're confused with, but they're.
Right, but, yeah, there are com-. The complaints I've got is not about the additional houses, it's that administrative fee. Because what's that used for? I mean, you, we, we jumped it up eighty dollars per house.
Yeah.
That's eighty dollars that can be cost, that's man hours that can be used for the inspections, like. Was brought up, it's that administrative part that people have problems with.
But I, I think. I, I unders- so, I think when we, when, when fees increase, people are gonna get pinched, right? But I think what Kathleen has explained here is that, you know, matter, no matter where you slice that money, whether they're saying, no, it's the application fee, or no, it's the increase in this. It's costing more, right, and so, uh, but I, what I'm hearing. And definitely what I've known was coming down the pike since we approved this and we approved it to be free. Was we knew. We're never gonna get to actually implement the program unless we start charging money for the hours it takes. For people to go out there, that administrative fee, that's also what is, what is paying for a person, right? It's not just. An application fee, like it costs this much money to fill out a piece of paper. It's, that money represents, this is going towards the salary of a person who's gonna go out and perform these hundreds of.
But that's what that eighty dollar increase should be, not that additional hundred.
Yeah. I, 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 I agree, I, I think, I think here's, here's the deal.
That's where I have the issue, is that additional hundred administrative fee.
Yeah.
And people, constituents have talked to me about that, they're, they're not happy with it, and if we're not answering, if we're not listening to our constituents. I mean. We shouldn't be up here, I mean, that, we are the voice of our people.
That's true, but it's also, you have, you have to listen to the. How many people do we have who registered?
Five hundred and something.
We have five hundred and twenty. That have registered, that's today, that's not near, even three quarters, I mean, we're probably three thousand rental homes right now. We've not even got close, but we give them that fifteen-day grace period too. And then we're still sending them letters, we sent out two mailings to every single landlord. This year, to introduce them to the new fees. And to try to make the process easier and smoother for them. And that's a lot of postage we put out, and that's a lot of staff time to go and create those letters and then mail all those letters and do all that. And then to go in there and note, note, and all the smart, all the cases. So.
Right, but that's, that eighty dollars is for, that's right, that's what that eighty dollar increase should be used for. That, not that administrative fee, that's what I'm, that's what I'm bringing up, we need to just get rid of that. We've already increased.
Well, what I.
Say, I just.
Yeah.
But, but, so. Going back to twenty eighteen and just looking at this, it looks like the, again, what we're looking at a difference is. The administrative fee was waived for anybody before December thirty-first of twenty eighteen. So I mean, after reading this. After January first, twenty nineteen, it'd be a hundred dollars administrative fee per, per person.
Per owner.
Per owner. And then it'd be twenty dollars per unit. From twenty-eight, January twenty, January first, twenty nineteen until present. The change that's occurred now, the administrative fee being the same. Administrative fee back then was paying for the administrative assistant who would take care of the clerical, my understanding, from just. I guess what looks like was the notes on this. Was to pay for that administrative person that would do the task of sending out the letters, following up, answering the phones and so forth, when these folks would call it, have questions, schedule the, the inspections and whatnot. And then the change from twenty to eighty. For single-family dwelling or from twenty to thirty for an apartment unit. Is to pay for the actual inspector that would go out. Now, we could change that to whatever, but I want to make sure that if that was still the intent, I just want to make sure that that's what we stand.
Yeah, li- listen, listen, listen.
Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
No, Mike, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off.
No, go ahead, sir.
You sure?
Yep.
Listen, listen, I was the one that spearheaded this program and it was never, this is, this is becoming big government. And it was never designed to be big government. It was designed to make sure that we have knowledge of rental properties because of what I said before. Now, you're saying that it is estimated that we have three thousand rental properties. How much a percentage of our city? Of the, of, of the properties within our city are rental properties, give me. Because, because we, because the community needs to know why this whole ordinance is important.
I can't give you that percentage right now, Mayor, because actually even today. I found four new rental properties that somebody bought four homes in Lamarck out, and they live in Las Vegas. This is what's happening more and more and more, we're not finding these, we're, we're running across these homes. And that's how we're finding them, I can't give you that percentage right now, it's changing.
Well, you, how, how many rooftops do we have? Just, just, just general, how, how many rooftops do we have?
And.
In the city.
How many, do you know the number, what, six thousand, what's something, was it?
For utilities, for water, or residential.
Just rooftops. Eight thousand rooftops, you just said we have. Eight thousand rooftops, you just said we have about three thousand. Rental properties, right, so, so I just want the community to understand why this ordinance is important. But this ordinance was never intended to be big government, this ordinance was intended for us to be able to know where these folks are. So that when, that when there are complaints. Because I was here, when there are complaints. Uh, and we find, as code enforcement officers, we find that those dwellings somehow have failed to comply. We would then be able to easily contact those owners. To make sure that those domiciles, those residences, those properties would be put back into compliance. That was, that's what it was originally intended for, so before we get to a place that we're saying, we want a code enforcement officer, officer to inspect every property. My next question is this, how many complaint-driven inspections have we done? And I know the answer is gonna be very, very minimal, I already know that, right, and you know it too, so do we want to answer that question, or do we want to just move past it?
The the complaints, we investigate them, but usually we have to refer them to another agency. Because it involves assisted living, like that Texas. But we still investigate them.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Because they're, they're truly, they'll end up substandard.
And 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 the point was not to say anything about our code enforcement response, the point is. We know that we have very little complaint-driven inspections. So before we start to have an inspector, pay for an inspector, inspect every property. Let's do the opposite of that and make sure that all of our residents know that there is an ordinance, and if they have issues. That they have a way to complain, then we, if we see, my goodness. There are, every month, there are thirty or forty complaints, and we're finding that that they're valid, then we may want to introduce. This idea that we need to have a full-time inspector, but there's no empirical data that would suggest that we need that now. So we don't, in my opinion, and I'm one vote, I don't know that we need to balloon this program up to this place. Uh, right now, that's just me, my, my initial reaction, I'll leave it there.
Remember, we don't charge if you own rental property, but you have a family member living in it, we don't charge, they don't have to pay for that, they register it, but they don't have to pay.
Okay, thank you. I saw Joe and then I saw Caesar.
I was just gonna get clarity for notes.
Okay, did you get your clarity?
I'm waiting for the next.
Okay, okay, go ahead, Jim.
Clarity, this is clarity, I keep hearing about an application fee, is that a part and separate from the administrative fee?
It's the same thing, it's a rental registration application fee. It in, people understand that, what am I applying for, okay, well, it's it's an administrative fee, in essence, it pays for the administrative. It well, used to pay for the administrative work behind it.
Okay, so, so I'm a rental owner, I'm a rental property.
You're applying for a rental, re- rental permit in the city.
That's gonna cost me a hundred dollars.
Yes, the application fee, yes.
And that's also what we're referring to after the first year as an administrative fee?
It's the same thing.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
It's just some people understand administrative fees, some people understand application.
Okay.
Cause they say, I'm not applying for any, what am I applying for, I said, well, you're applying for a rental registration permit.
Right. I mean, it should be, it's a permit fee, let's just call it a permit.
Yeah, but it's under licensing, so it's confusing.
Rental registration fee is what, so in the first year was a hundred dollars. A second year now, under the new ordinance or the new fee structure, I still have to pay the hundred dollars, correct?
The, the application fee has never changed, it's always been a hundred dollars since twenty nineteen.
So I pay the hundred dollars.
Per year.
But, but per year, but now I'm also, as opposed to the twenty dollars I paid before. I'm also now gonna pay a hundred dollars per house.
For a single-family home.
So it's a hundred dollars plus a hundred dollars versus, so, so. I, I concur with Keith, understand it to be, where we're gonna go inspect to this, inspections, in my mind. In Galveston County, though, that was at the last census, we were near sixty-four percent of homeownership in Lamarck. Now, the new, the new, the new American Community Surveys came out, I haven't had to take a look at that, so I'm hopeful it still remains high on that side. And it also gives us an idea of, uh, but I also want to say rental properties also create. Where they create income for us is off property taxes. And because they paid a full load.
Right, I think we've kind of gone off on a tangent from the original.
We did, man, we did, it was, it was, it was a beautiful tangent, wasn't it?
Right, but my whole concern is because I've, like I said, I've had, I've had, uh, I'm trying to bring it back on track. Um, I've had constituents that own three houses and they've been charged four hundred dollars.
Do you, did you ask them what the median rental in rental price is right now?
Well, they're okay with the three hundred dollars, but the fourth hun, the fourth one. And that's, that's.
Let's bring it, let's bring it to a born, you brought it, you brought it here, so, um, I would, I would suggest you work with. Uh, with, uh, staff to, to understand what that extra fee is. Uh, identify it, bring it back to council, and let's have coun- council, can, council consider eliminating it, just that simple.
Well, that's what I thought I was originally doing.
Do you know, do you know what the fee is tonight, I mean, do you have the figure?
I will, give me a little bit, let's table it for now, and let me get that.
You want to table it and bring it back tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I can find that.
Council, do you have any objections to that?
I, I, I do, because. The hundred dollar a- at administrative fee slash application fee is necessary. The issue has been adding when you have multiple properties. And I think, and that's why I'm proposing, let's either stay at twenty dollars for the additional homes. Or bring that down from a hundred to fifty dollars be due to what's happening with inflation, money's tight. And the timing of it all, I do agree as a former director of public housing that had worked with section eight inspections, that's a. That's gonna be a tricky. You know, and and we, we have to look at the liability of that and what it means, but we are moving into society where they're creating forever renters. And I don't know if you guys know that, but people are, are wanting to rent more, this, this new generation. And cities are doing what, what you said, because more people are choosing to rent. Now, I don't agree with that, but that's why cities are getting into the inspections and doing all of that because of that, so our society is moving. Towards that, but. I, I'm okay with, I, I suggest that we either keep it at the twenty dollars, what it is now for the additional fees. Or bringing that hundred down for the additional homes, down to fifty. And that's just, uh, just to give, uh, some, even though we know rental prices, costs have, have gone up. That's a whole.
There's inflation everywhere.
Yeah, and 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 we, and and, and we know that we have, um, we have already. Uh, established fees for signs and billboards, and so there, there, there's revenue coming into our code enforcement department. That'll help, uh, add, add staff members, I, I think right now we just kinda.
May I, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I am not in favor of us changing this, um, simply because I feel like this was presented to us during workshop.
It was.
We all understood the rationale then. We knew we would get pushback, because when you raise fees, you, you receive pushback. I think, uh, so far I have not heard anything that is data-driven compelling enough to me. That says that this fee is onerous. Um, you know, if you, again, you know, Kathleen alluded to it, but, you know, rental. You know, the lease, lease, leasing is, is more expensive now, to pay a monthly rent is more expensive, so if you own four hun, four homes, not four hundred, sorry. If you own four homes, or you own three homes and you're renting those. You are also probably seeing an increase in what you can charge as rent. I'm not saying that that alone is a reason to say, oh, these should all go up, but all costs are rising. And I, again, like, unless there was some more information in front of me, I don't find that compelling enough. Because we've all gone through this, we all went through the workshops, we understood where this money is going, the administrative costs haven't gone anywhere. Like, or the needs, I mean, that, that money is needed, and I think what we learned during workshops repeatedly is. There is a desperate need for more of it in all departments, so for us to take that away. And know that we're still incre- we're gonna, we're gonna want to see more rental homes registered each year. I mean, we want to see that number increase because we know they're out there, so we want them to be doing the work of going out, even if they didn't start doing. The annual. Inspections.
We're noticing a trend in some of the new subdivisions, we've had some rental registration applications come through. That we weren't aware during the development process that they were gonna be rental.
Right.
So we're tracking these, and, and I was gonna sit with Gus about it, and it's concerning. Because remember when Salt Gap, where us came in, and we didn't know they're gonna be rental homes. So if, if we decrease these fees, and we continue to get more of these rental homes. It's gonna be difficult to be able to provide this program as the mayor and council intended to begin with.
Yeah, but the, the, the council member that initiated this program is saying the original intent was to gather information. So that if there were complaints from renters that were code violations, that were found to be code violations. That we would easily be able to contact those owners to initiate a process, uh, or remedy. That was the original intent. There is no data that would suggest that this program ought to rise above that level, it ought to increase in its participation. And if it increases in its participation, then it'll increase in its revenue, but it should not increase in its, in its application because. Uh, we have not had an overwhelming amount of complaint-driven inspections, there's nothing that indicates that we have. The program works because it allows for us to create a database that we could respond in a timely fashion to issues. Of code violation, but it does not work if it becomes onerous and it becomes cumbersome, and it becomes a burden on property owners. And it becomes, uh, uh, something of, of some sort of, 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 uh, uh, punishment. Uh, to them, uh, we, we, we don't want to overburden them, there's nothing that would indicate we need anything more than. Uh, the ability to respond quickly to possible code violations. And that's a win-win for not only the property owners, but for all property owners. Because it raises the value of all of our properties in, in the long run, so I, I hope that I'm giving you an understanding of what I thought the program should have been.
The original ordinance did not give us the authorization to go do inspections, the ordinance would have to be changed. So when we get complaints, they're not under a rental registration complaint. They could be under accumulating garbage and trash, it could be under junk vehicles, they could be under, I got mold in my house, or they could be the grass is too high, or the windows are busted out. So there are complaints, but they're not tracked as under a rental registration. So we didn't do that because we didn't have the authority to go and do those things, but. If we go back and we look at all the rental registration properties, the properties that we do have that are rental, we'll probably find quite a few. But they were worked as code complaints. You see what I mean?
And that was something we actually talked about in those early stages when we workshopped, um, do you remember that, Keith, like. I remember you being in there and Dara and all these, we had all those people at the table, and the thing that was talked out, talked about ad nauseam was. This is such a good idea, we are such a small city with such a small budget, we can't. We can't go to step X, we have to do step A, B, and C first, and that's why, what I remember. That, that's why we landed on, we can't start issuing inspections right away. Kathleen had, was very clear from the beginning, like, I'm gonna not, the, the best we can hope for in these first few years. Is to get people to voluntarily register, so we should make it very easy for them to do it, and then start to increase fees incrementally. And, and that's why I feel like this is what we're doing, this was the plan, as I remember it, it, it feels unsurprising to me that this is what. Is, is where we're at, um, and I just have one last question, and that is, so. These, the, the, the fees that we've been talking, the, the raising to a hundred dollars. The, the staff that that would then translate into, that that, those are paying for this person. Do you, do you see that, and when you presented all of this to us in budget, was that a staff person who's new?
Yes.
And would they only be?
Special, special, um. Special programs officer.
Okay.
They'd handle the vacant building, they'd handle the reg- rental registration, game rooms, we're doing those right now.
And so, part, and so i- is it safe to say that part of how we were able to, part of what you pre- presented to us and what we approved. Were these different increases in fees that all added up to one person?
Uh, yes.
And so, taking away this eighty dollars would then affect our ability to have paid for this person, and we're talking about not just doing the rental registrations, but doing. The game rooms, doing all the other special things, the empty lot, empty buildings. So, so I'm just saying, if we, if we, we have to keep that in consideration, if we take this fund away. We don't have a full-time person anymore, and we have to find that somewhere else.
But I thought. We just found it in, and we just found it in, 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 in the, uh, sign, the digital sign.
She's saying all of, all of those were factored in to equal.
They, they, we, we just. Caesar, Caesar, we just raised fees on our billboards. And on our digital signs, we just did that. Because we realized that there were at least fifty of them in the city, and we realized that we can charge those. Folks, like every other city, a thousand dollars a year, that was your code enforcement officer there. That was a full-time code enforcement officer right there. Because we were going to need people to regulate our signs anyway. We have a sign ordinance that needs to be regulated anyway, there is. Uh, again, going back to, and Casey's right, Casey's right on, 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 uh, uh, overall vision, but part of those steps were missed. And again, we have to go back to this idea that, that. We don't have enough evidence that there is, uh, that, that this program has been complaint-driven. And that those complaints have resulted in code violations, you're telling me, hold on, Caesar. You're telling me that we can look in the, in the, uh, uh, other program, uh, to see. You know, these addresses, uh, um, what's the name of the program, request tracker? To see these addresses, and we can look in the, if, i- i- in the, uh, open records to see these addresses. But those same addresses ought to also appear on the rental registration database, so we should be able to scrapulate that easy. We should be able to see how many of our rental, our, our properties that are registered, uh, as rental properties. How many of those have had complaints, uh, of code violations against them, and how many of those complaints have proven to be. Uh, accurate or true, we should be able, and the fact that we have not done that work, and we are still here. Having this discussion, I can understand why that would make some of our, our citizens skeptical on as to why we've raised our fees. One of the other things, Casey's point, and it's true, we did understand what we were doing in, in May. Of last year, and this is January, this is about six months into, uh, uh, um, our. Budget contemplation, July, August, September, we con- we contemplated these fees throughout the summer. So from our initial contemplation, and things in our society have changed a little bit. Uh, we are entering into a recession, uh, inflation has ran rapid, uh, consumer confidence is at a, a low. Uh, and so, uh, uh, school bonds have been passed, uh, and so there are other burdens on the taxpayer that we might need to consider, so. I get, uh, what Mr. Carlson is asking, and I'm willing to consider that, whether that be tonight or at a later date. Caesar, you wanted to speak?
What I was gonna say, just, you know, exactly to that point, was. We know what the fees were intended to be, we know what we pass them to be, if any changes is needed. However, we deem those numbers to be. We're ready to move that forward at this point, I think, you know, the pulse of the council is very clear, and we're ready to. Whatever needs to be done.
Yeah, the, the whole thing is, like I said, it's the adminis- cause what I'm finding here is kind of the old schedule of fees. On the city website, cause it still says twenty dollars for the additional. Because it still says twenty dollars for the additional ones. And the way that that one's worded is your first house is a hundred and each additional is twenty. There's no administrative fee.
That's the registration application fee.
Okay, but I've had constituents go up to register their properties and they've been charged four hundred dollars. An administrative fee and then one hundred bucks for each house. And that's what I'm trying to eliminate is that administrative fee. Um, but I can't find it the new schedule of
It's in the schedule of fees. Where would that be, Karen, the schedule of fees? Gus? Yeah.
To date, we're still trying to cooperate with the municipal to get those correct.
And it's in the, it's in the schedule of fees.
Can you find it for us, Gus?
Right, current one's not up. The city clerk just stated that.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm looking at the at the ordinance itself.
And that's that's another thing, another some
Wouldn't that be a minute, Gus?
Right, but the um, the uh, the the agenda had the uh, or the schedule of fees ordinance attached to it. Um, that tonight's agenda, that's what I'm looking at.
What are you saying, Joe?
Yeah, right here.
It ain't showing the application fee is a hundred dollars.
Well, Michael is trying to act. He's trying to lead this council in an act. Needing the information. Who can give him the accurate information?
What what is the question?
Got it.
Michael, would you, Gus is asking you a question, Michael.
Okay, I got it.
You got it. He he has a guess, thank you.
It's uh, section one under the ordinance twenty dash eighteen dash seventeen. But didn't we just, but we just raised that because this what's being quoted is still stating the hundred dollar fee. And then twenty dollars for each other one. However, that's not correct.
That is correct.
That's not correct. We raised it to a hundred dollars for each additional house, not twenty dollars.
In the new schedule, fees hasn't been posted.
Right, and that's, that's the
That's what she just said.
Right, and that's what we're
So if
That's why I'm having the issue.
So 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 we, if if we stipulate Gus to that new fee being a hundred dollars from twenty, is that correct?
Yes, this is, this is the rental application, rental registration per unit fee. Single dwell, family dwellings or homes, the current fee, this is the fee, the fee schedule ordinance was twenty. The proposed increase that was adopted was a hundred dollars per single family home.
So the 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 fee increase is a hundred dollars, Michael. Are you, are you wanting uh, this council to entertain that fee changing at all? If so, what do you motion that fee to change to? I just, hold on, go Gus.
And i- if I may, um, obviously any direction y'all want to give us, we can do. But since the fee schedule was adopted by ordinance, we're going to have to change it, change it by ordinance. And the charter is going to require that that ordinance be in writing for first reading.
Right, so basically whatever motion you guys make tonight will be a directive for us to come back.
Gotcha, you're worth it. Right, so so this is, this is, this is only a directive, guys. Uh, so Michael, did you
What I'm trying to get rid of is that administrative fee of a hundred dollars because our constituents. No, keep, keep because our constituents shouldn't have to pay four hundred dollars if they only own three properties. And I've had constituents come back to me and that's why I brought it up. They've paid four hundred dollars for three properties.
So so we need to know, the council needs to act. What are you, what are you proposing we do?
Get rid of that administrative fee. Uh, let them have the regis- the 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 three applications. So that's a hundred dollars each. I'm cool with that. It's that fourth administrative fee that
He he
That's, that's what I'd like
Michael, I think I need to say, I'd like to, he needs to make a motion that he would like to direct. Right, I mean
Right.
There needs to be some different wording here.
Right, but I think Karen wants to weigh in on what he's saying. Go ahead, Karen.
Sorry, I'm trying to keep up for the minute.
Sorry.
For clarity, I guess, just for the minute's sake. You're asking to change ultimately would would probably be better described as like the processing fee of a hundred dollars, not the actual registration fee.
No, keep the administration as a hundred, but get rid of that, correct? The processing fee, as you you would call it.
Yeah.
That additional fee.
And then do we need to vote on that though? I mean, because like
We would have, yeah, we'd have to deal by ordinance.
No, but do we need to vote on
I think he was just answering the question.
Yeah, what I'm saying, Michael, is even before that comes to ordinance, this council has to vote that we even want that to be in to come to us as an ordinance change.
Right, that's what, that's what we're entertaining right now, whether or not we want this to even come back to us as an ordinance change. To be clear, Michael, you are, you are contemplating making a motion that the administrative fee of a hundred dollars be eliminated from each uh, each reg- uh, each rental property that's registered, but that the fee of one hundred dollars per property remain.
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Michael?
But okay, with all due respect, that doesn't make sense. Okay, it doesn't add up because think about this, if you, before we took it up, it was one hundred dollars for the admin fee. And twenty dollars per rental property. So that's actually cheaper for the residents if you do it that way. Now, if you get rid of the hundred dollars admin fee and they're paying a hundred dollars for each. Then they're actually paying more, councilman. That 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 that's what I'm saying, the resident will be actually paying more.
Right, but if I have three rental properties, I shouldn't be paying four hundred bucks for three rental properties. Because with the new fee schedule, we raised it to a hundred dollars each for each additional house.
Right, but that, but that is, okay, so the rental registration admin fee is, everybody has to pay that. Whether you have one or ten.
Right.
You have one or two. So everybody across the board has to pay that hundred dollars admin fee.
Right, that's what I'm saying, get rid of that.
Because most people don't have four and five properties, let's be honest. Most people don't. So the additional per per unit fee or per per property, single family home was twenty dollars. Per unit was for apartments was thirty dollars. But if you propose to take out the administrative fee and keep it a hundred dollars for every property. Then they'll be paying more. That's all I'm saying. And I don't know if that's your intent.
No, the the way the new fee schedule is raised, you pay a hundred dollars per property. But you also pay a hundred dollar administrative fee, right? And that's what I'm proposing. Get rid of that admin fee because we've already jumped the prices up. We've jumped the prices up for every additional.
I'm not saying, I'm not
Okay, so so then, so then, so then if his motion dies, then then you'll introduce a motion. Okay, Michael, are you making a motion to that effect?
Yes.
Karen, do you need him to to state it or did we, did we?
I make a motion that we eliminate the administrative fee and keep the rates at a hundred dollars per house.
There you go. There you go. Is there a second? There a second?
Question, that that a hundred dollars is only in year two and beyond, is what you're saying. Even the first year to register?
Yes.
There's the application.
There was no fees the very first year. Twenty nineteen is when fees start.
I know, but there's a hundred
There is now for everybody.
Hundred dollars is the rental order that I have to file, the rental fee application. And his motion says he's getting rid of the whole thing?
No, get rid of the administrative fee. You still have to pay a hundred dollars for all your rental property. There's an additional fee that's in there. That's what I'm getting rid of.
That that, that's what you guys are talking different. Let's all agree on one language, okay? The hundred dollar fee, I'm just gonna call it the hundred dollar fee. Your your goes away in year two is what you're saying.
No, no.
It goes away in year one?
Yes.
So.
And then Yes, that's what Michael, that's what Michael, Michael has made a motion.
My motion?
To eliminate the administrative fees of our rental registration ordinance and to require one a one hundred dollar fee per for every rental property registered in our city.
Single family home.
Single family home, thank you for helping with that. Is there a second? The motion dies for the lack of a second. Councilwoman Yancy, did you want to offer a motion?
For clarity's for clarity's sake, uh, let's, I think we need to come back to this. I I'm gonna make a motion that we table it so that we all have a clear understanding. Because I don't want anyone to be, so I move that we table this and come back to it.
Very good. Uh, is there a second for the table? There is no more discussion on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This item is tabled. Item eight, three. Monthly meetings, discussion, possible action regarding returning to two regular monthly meetings. Uh, I asked the council to revisit this uh, based on our workload. Uh, it it appears as though, council, correct me if I'm wrong, it appears as though our workload has uh, be been a little more bearable. And we've become a a little more efficient. Uh, and so I don't know if we want to proceed with entertaining this at this time. We can look at this again in six months. I'm comfortable with that unless council sees fit to do otherwise. I don't entertain any comments. Provided that the caveat has always been, and we just triggered this. Any table triggers a second meeting. So we will have a second meeting this month because we just tabled an item and I think that's works well. Do we have two items? And so we want to continue with the idea that any table triggers a second meeting and that's fair.
Here's my request is, can we have a little bit of data, Karen? Can you pull it up easily to see like how many official meetings we've had per month for the, because I mean uh, you know, I was, you know, resistant to this, but in terms of scheduling, if it turns out that we are having them at, I mean, it feels like we are having at least two a month. Um, just the ability to know weeks ahead of time. It would be dramatically helpful for me because it's the, oh, we have a meeting next week at this time. That's too hard for my my working schedule. Um, so I would be in favor of going ahead and scheduling them.
Far back do you want to look? I do have
Let's say the last six months.
And and to your point, Casey, it it confuses, it has the potential to confuse our constituents. If they know that there's a regular meeting every fourth Monday, then they would be prepared to respond.
Right, exactly. So it's like just for making it easier on everyone, although I would say that would also mean if we were to go to a system of having two scheduled meetings, that would be it. Like I would say, I don't, we can't then schedule more on top of that. We just can't. I don't think that's, that's, this is not workable for citizens, is not workable for staff. And it ain't workable for me.
Statistically, for the last six months, you have had about two to three meetings per month.
Well, then I would say, I cannot believe it, but I am uh, in favor of I uh, can I make a motion that I I I moved that we go to two regular meetings?
Yeah, we have to change it by ordinance. You can make a motion that we direct uh, them to bring an ordinance back.
Does it have to be by ordinance or or is it?
That's that's by ordinance, yeah.
Oh, well, let me ask this question because I know um, before when this question came up, when I uh, first I elected. Um, the staff was saying that 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 having one meeting a month allowed them to get things done. And so I would like to hear from the staff if they like one meeting a month or two.
Well, I bet they feel the same. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not a staff. I'm talking over everybody.
Because I know that's what, that's what came back the last
Yeah, and I agree with that, but I mean, the fact of them, that's why I asked, how many have we continued to have? And so I think we either need to decide, yes, the staff is saying one a month, that's what we hold ourselves to. We don't schedule more than that. Oh, and then that means we have to not have this triggered policy and we have to know that when we like, the once a month is it. We can't schedule this extra meeting here and this extra meeting here. Or we say, we don't have the ability to police ourselves in that way. And so we need to just put two on the schedule.
Uh, yeah, I I I would be more inclined to do that because a council manager form of government needs more oversight than a strong mayor form of government. The city manager needs more oversight. You have a strong mayor form of government, which we are not, ladies and gentlemen. The mayor makes more decisions uh, on a day to day basis and and the council then then ratifies that. That's what what's happening in Texas City. A council manager form of government where we collectively supervise him or her or whoever it is. I I think that we need to have more oversight. Uh, and I think a regularly scheduled second meeting should allow staff to break down some of those uh, items to be to to more of a finer detail. We can schedule this thing where public works issues are always uh, dealt with the second, third uh, Monday in the month. Fire issues are are all are dealt with the fourth Monday in the month. And so to them, it still would be a monthly deal, right? But for us, it would be two times a month. And we would have more information and the discussions can be more detailed and the public can be more informed in the process. And so they still can have their once a month process. You know, we would just be able to visit and give direction twice a month, I would say.
I do agree with you, Kim, that we should hear, like, here, I mean, it's 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 you and some of the people that are here right now that have to do so much of the like, so much of the work. What do you think? And I know that's a hard thing to ask you in front of everybody. But um, you know, you're the one who's been in all these meetings and had to do every single bit of minutes, all the prep, trying to catch up all the time. What do you think?
I mean, I obviously don't want to be the only voice on this for sure.
Yeah.
But um, I kind of like the idea that Mayor gave to make it a hybrid approach. I know for other um, department heads having two meetings a month is a lot, but also considering I'm me and Gus are primarily the ones writing all the ordinances and resolutions. Doing that for the entire staff once a month can be a lot. And it actually kind of cripples my department for at least a week, if not two every month. And so that's, that's kind of heavy, but I know for other people, it may be different. So I serve at the pleasure of the council, so whatever you decide, I'm here.
You're not the only voice. I got you. Um, for the for the spreading of information of how council governs, how council decides, two meetings would be easier. Because it would break up. The idea of doing certain departments uh, on one Monday versus other departments on another Monday. I could see that would help prevent the city clerk's office, which is a staff of one, uh, rather than having a deputy and a city clerk. Um, as well as the additional meetings of one on ones with all of our council members. Would help alleviate some of that work on that side because we as a staff do a lot of prep for those meetings as well as city council meetings as a whole. If selfishly with two meetings, they became shorter. Then I think you could sell department heads, you know, department heads being required to be here is 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 a part of the process, is a part of the job, but that hybrid approach of public works and IT and city clerk and those types of things being on that one Monday versus public safety being on the other would help alleviate how we do one on ones with y'all, how we prepare for said meetings like tonight. Um, and obviously, like you said, with the average, if we're averaging two to three meetings already. If we have these set as a staff, we would know and then be able to plan in accordance that these Mondays, one are on our work schedule as well as a prep schedule uh, to give you the provided documentation and information.
Following that up in terms of um, passing ordinances and things like that, that helps us implement things a little bit faster from when we used to have two meetings a month. Because first reading at one meeting, second reading at the next versus having thirty days in between. And if there are any changes, statistically, it takes sixty to ninety days to get an ordinance passed the way we are currently set up. Currently, um, I'm looking at Rick right now. Um, he's got a lot of grant projects and those deadlines. They come real quick. And so that kind of, that would help us in terms of some of these special meetings as well. So just thoughts.
I mean, just some comments from from a public work standpoint, uh, uh,
The administrative part of getting projects to city council is important. The other part of what I do, I guess, is day-to-day operations. So sometimes those operations come into play with timing of getting projects together. Sometimes we're also waiting for documentation from outside people, whether it's engineering or the vendors. So right now, if we're, if we're trying to use a single council meeting per month, if we miss that council meeting, it delays everything.
To this protocol, it has to mean that we don't schedule more than two. Like it means the cessation of special meetings.
Right.
Which, which is great.
Right.
Um because I mean, that, that is the trade-off. But like, it can't mean we do that and then, oh, oh wait, no, there was this thing we missed. We gotta schedule one more meeting next Wednesday. Can we make it? It would have to be, it's these two and that's it. Cause that's what makes it for people to be able to come and listen and for us to be prepared.
Right.
Um so I don't know if that could be in the ordinance or not. That seems like kind of, that might be kind of weird to put in writing, but um.
That, 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 that could be, we can put that in resolution form as, as, as a council. We can say that we will not uh have any special meetings unless some, there is some sort of a deadline and we have to follow a law. That would be the only stipulation, a legal stipulation. We, we could say that as, as a council and follow it.
Then I make a motion that the, that city staff comes back to us with an ordinance that provides for two monthly city council meetings. Um provided that there are no special meetings unless required to, unless required by meeting a legal deadline.
Could you also, um, yeah, wait a minute, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Um could you also, Kiera, um, provide us with a resolution as a council that would say we will not have any special meetings outside of these two meetings if this ordinance passes?
I will work with.
Work with Gus, yeah. We, we can get the language together, but Gus, you get the point, right?
I do, yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Here you know, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Uh show the item passes four to one. Item eight four. Uh upcoming events, city events and important dates for community awareness. Caesar.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um just making note, obviously for the observation of uh the MLK holiday on Monday, January sixteenth. Uh making note that the first date of file for your place on the ballot, should you choose to run to office, being on Wednesday, January eighteenth. Uh formal announcement, that will be hosting our city financial workshop on Monday, January twenty-third. Board member orientation will be here at city hall um in this building on Wednesday, January twenty-fifth. Uh we will have two town hall meetings, one on either side of town. Marketing will go out on that soon here. If not right now, um for the town hall to be held on Tuesday, January thirty-first, the second one on Thursday, February second. Different days allowing for a different size of the community, um whichever is, is in closer vicinity um for residents to, to attend. And then lastly, our state of the city address, more marketing to follow, uh will be on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh.
Very good. Let's make sure that the, those town hall meetings, uh I am, I am asking that you be present. Uh I am asking that you would find it in your heart to uh direct your uh major department heads, your police, your fire chief, your public works director, uh your, yeah, our uh city clerk, uh uh those persons, uh Kyle. I'm asking you to find it in your heart to, to, to ask those persons to attend and to make sure that each council person attends, especially if their district is involved. Obviously, the east side, we would invite Casey. Uh and, and Michael, the west side would be Kim and Joe. Uh let's make sure that, that our council people are present as well. We will get a time on it. Uh there will be more marketing to come out. Uh I think tonight you're just letting council be aware of the dates.
Certainly. I'm sorry, did I say that wrong? I probably did.
Okay, okay.
How you doing?
Council, do we have any questions about these dates? Okay, let's move to item eight for the good of the order. Uh we will do that before we go into executive session. Uh and we will start with Michael. In the new year.
New year. Few things. Uh welcome to the new police officers that just started. Um Officer Thomason, good job. Want to put that out there. One request for the city manager. When I was at PD today, I was looking at the, the TV screens and they're still showing Bayou Fest. Can we try to get, get updated, please? Certainly. Cause I mean, Bayou Fest twenty twenty is over. So that's all I have and welcome to twenty twenty-three and thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Michael. Casey?
Um, Happy New Year. Thank you to all the staff and I echo the congratulations and the welcome to the new police uh personnel. That's really exciting to, to get, to get more people in and um hooray, hooray, hooray. Thank you so much. Happy New Years to everybody.
Thank you, Casey.
Good night. Okay, um just wanna give a recognition to uh one of our longtime District A resident, Sister Alajul Williams, that um recently passed away. She played piano at Rising Star Baptist Church for seventy years. Um her pastor is the longest-serving senior pastor, Pastor Benford, in the world. He's been put into the uh Guinness World of Records. Been the longest-serving pastor of one church. And so uh and she's been there with him seventy of those years. So this is a great um home-going celebration on this weekend for her on Brookshire and she's, she was very um she loved Lamarck. So just give a shout out to her family. Um I still wanna uh look at um naming something after uh Ron Crowder. And some of the other very famous, I consider famous people that are from Lamarck, such as you know, we're still talking about naming Bayou Fest after Bobby Hopkins, naming something after Geraldine Sam and something definitely for uh K. Betty Hutchinson. I know we've been talking about that, but I really wanna see us do something um to uh memorialize their, their efforts here in the city of Lamarck. So we have a lot of uh amazing people that did a lot of work for this city and that, and we're, we're staying, we stand on their shoulders. I wanna make sure that we um don't forget their legacy. So with that, next weekend is uh MLK parade and we're participating in that parade. Uh we're excited about that to celebrate um the legacy and that uh and, and what um Pastor King brought to our country. So um twenty twenty-three is gonna be really interesting. I'm hoping to see a lot of things manifest and I really, really hope that we can fix that problem on Newman Street. I used to live off of Hoover, so I know exactly what they're talking about. So I can't wait to see uh those pipes fixed. That's, you know, so we can show that deliverable. But other than that, I'm excited about twenty twenty-three and I'm looking forward to the town hall. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Likewise, I share best wishes to everyone for the new year. God bless us all and our families. Number one, the challenges that we have with our infamous sewer system is, as, as I said earlier, an ongoing one. It impacts all of us uh and uh even myself, this past um rain, rain event. And um but not only that, I ended up with a break in the water line as well, too. And it's been a long time since I've actually gotten out and worked a shovel. But I was doing that out there, digging up uh to my water line and, and I wanna say thanks to Rick and the um public utilities, our enterprise utilities and the staff there. Uh although I did know the, where the leak was, my water meter box was completely full of water and that's where the water appeared to be. And um I know your staff was dealing with that particular weekend of the bad weather. Uh I think you had probably asked them how many calls they had between the sewer and the water. And he said, I think something like thirty-something calls. And I said, well, I'm feel guilty even having you here. Just please help me identify where the leak is and I'll take care of it. And uh which they did, they were great. And so I wanna give a shout out to the two young men that came out and your staff. And I know you've been very responsive to that as well, too. Uh I just ask all of us to have patience with them because we're not the wealthiest city. We have our challenges with our infrastructure and we have a limited number of staff that's available. I have mentioned to the uh city manager, the one item that I did learn as I followed the protocols to report since it was a a weekend, that um on weekend service, when you have challenges, it refers the calls to call the non-emergency number at the police department. And I asked the city manager uh to perhaps let's revisit on that when we have uh very bad events, right, that may tend to overwhelm the dispatchers at the um, at the police department, uh which in my case appeared to be the case because I was put on hold for three times and there was never a response. So not to worry. But we still, but this seems to be that there's a, something that perhaps we should visit on, on that area. I will be attending as part of the affiliation as a alternate member to the Houston Galveston Area Board of Governments. Uh area board, yes, area uh Board of Governments, the uh first retreat that they're having uh this weekend. And uh what's the key to that is to c- continue building relationships, uh especially uh smaller cities like Lamarck. They traditionally don't get the, the uh attention that the larger cities within the Houston Galveston Area Council of Governments do. And especially for funding. And so I'll be there trying to promote home rule cities and the needs that we have as smaller communities, especially in what infrastructure and our water system. The uh and last, uh it's gonna be exciting to join once again in the MLK parade on um Ju- January the sixteenth, please come out there along Texas Avenue and I think it ends up over here toward the city hall, correct?
I think they're going. Great bell.
Oh, okay. No, oh there and um, and so it'll be exciting to participate in that. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Joe. Um we definitely have, uh we definitely mourn the loss of uh former Mayor Ron Crowder, who was not only a former mayor, he was a current Economic Development Corporation Chairman of the Board. He had served with distinction for decades in our city. And when you lose a person of that impact, uh it is very difficult to replace, i.e. uh a, a uh a Mac McGaffey. Uh and so our, our Economic Development uh Corporation will never be the same and we thank uh the chairman is what we called him affectionately. We thank chairman for his service to our community beyond uh the Economic Development Corporation. He was always a friend uh to, to every council that has served, a confident uh and a counselor uh with great, great advice. A lot of the historical uh information and data about our city was lost the day that he took his last breath. Uh and, and we're saddened, we're saddened by his loss. Uh and also Ms. Ali was a great educator uh and a great musician uh who was a model citizen uh and, 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 and the epitome of elegance uh in, in all that she did. Uh remembering her playing the piano was uh like a vision of an angel. And so we're gonna miss her and her presence uh in, in our community as well. Caesar, I'm really um I'm really becoming uh concerned that there are issues happening in our city. Uh and, and, and when those issues happen, those issues are being discussed on social media platforms. And we still have not found our way to respond as a city with factual information. There was a water leak as uh that, that has happened for over a week uh that we responded to, but, but I thought that we should have responded to it in a more dynamic way. Uh a more comprehensive way that we did not. Uh there, obviously, there are rains that happen within our city, those rains because of the infiltration in our sewer system. Those rains uh cause our sewer systems to back, our sewer system to back up and and flow out of manhole covers and flow uh in the places that it shouldn't. We should be honest with the public. We should tell them the truth about these things, the infiltration, the price tag on sewer reconstruction, the millions of dollars that it would have taken, the tens of years that this problem has existed. And also the good news, there are forty-eight point nine million dollars of federal dollars that are going toward this project that will allow for over time, your sewer system not to back up in your homes. So let's let them know what the price tag was, why it's broken in the way that it is, but also some of the new information needed to give them some encouragement about what we're doing in the city. That's nonexistent. And we have a public information officer. No fault of JB, has nothing to do with JB. We're talking, we're, we're talking styles here and, 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 and things of that nature. Um, and, and these things are prevalent on social media. And I am of the opinion that part of our job in the twenty-first century uh is to make sure that factual information is going out uh in our community, uh not directed at any person, but always directed at, at a perspective of truth on what's actually happening, the good and the bad. And we've not done that. And so I'm concerned and as a council, uh I'm, I'm inclined that this council this year, sooner rather than later, deliberate on, on, on what role we expect that position to play. And so again, gunfire was the other thing. Uh apparently there have been reports of gunfire. Chief, I don't know if you know that, but, but but there have been a couple of reports of gunfire. Maybe you don't know it, you should know it. If you did know it, if he did know it, you know, I think maybe we should have, you should have chief out in front of this, letting the community know that we know it and here's what we're doing about it. When these complaints start to fester, people begin to believe that we are not responsive. That's the lesson that we learned. We have to be responsive in the information we're providing for the, to the community. The tr- the entire truth of what we know. And I want to work with council to help streamline that job function. But let me, let me just say this and then I'll be done. So this year definitely is a year for me uh and for, for my uh leadership of this council. It, it's a year of work. Last year uh there was a lot of things that have happened in our community, a lot of debate, a lot of, of uh consideration um conversation. Uh and we went through that as a community. And now we're here in twenty twenty-three and all of us are, are, are blessed to be here. Uh and, and what better way to move our city forward than to focus on the work? This year, I wanna focus on the work. What are we doing to improve the lives of our citizens? And for me, that means that we need to really focus on infrastructure. It's good news that we are, uh uh this council is moving forward with investing millions of dollars in water line repairs for the east side of our city in, in, in Casey's district. Let's focus on that work. There is uh forty-eight point nine million dollars of infrastructure improvements. Let's focus on that work. We have manhole uh uh repair and replacement. Let's focus on that work. We have manhole uh, uh, repair and replacement. Let's focus on that work. Also, I'm asking us to, to, to ignore uh, anything other than focusing on the work. Uh, uh, constituents' complaints, let's bring them forward to our city manager. Uh, anything else, let's focus on the work. One other thing I, I want a council to consider is, is we really need to look at at, at uh, potentially working with city administration to reorganize some of our departments. Because it's clear that some of our departments are not running efficiently at all, at all, at all. And, and we need help. We're not experts. And so council, I'd like for us to consider uh, looking at bringing in some people to help us to understand how to reorganize the, for example, this is an example, the Public Works Department, the Developmental Services Department uh, and departments that we might be able to be more efficient. I would really like to work with council on that this year. Uh, Caesar, I would really like for us to continue with the pressure of safe city. Uh, it has, it has really made an impact in our community. Chief, thank you for your uh, part in that and for the leadership of your officers in that. Uh, and lastly, we need to continue to work uh, with uh, our Economic Development Corporation. Uh, work with the, the Karen family uh, to develop our, our dog track site and some of the other sites uh, in our community. Again, for me this year, uh, I think that we should just simply focus on the work. Uh, let's, 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 let's have discussions surrounding doing what's best for the citizens of Lamarck in the work, infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. Safe city, safe city, safe city, economic development, so that we can ultimately lower our property taxes. So that's what it is for me. Thank you all for, for listening. Uh, and I look forward to seeing you in twenty twenty-three. Caesar, did you have something?
No, sir. You've covered it. Um, my sentiments with the, with the Crowder family. Um, short time knowing Chairman Crowder, he was uh, great to work with. Thank you, everybody, for well wishes for the new year. Looking forward to uh, in the ground running.
Very good. The la- the last thing I wanted to make council aware of is, is I've asked you to, to give us a schedule of every HOA uh, that we have in the city and every meeting so that uh, as a council uh, and as mayor and a council, we can go and make sure we visit with these uh, with these HOAs on a regular basis. So if you could provide that for us uh, and help us to coordinate that, we would definitely appreciate it.
Certainly.
If there's nothing further, let's see where we are. Uh, it's eight uh, forty-five. Casey, will you look at that? We are then going to recess, right, Joe? We recess. We are going to recess into executive session, item nine. The, the City Council for the City of Lamarck, Texas reserves the right to adjourn into executive session at any time during this meeting to discuss any of the matters listed above. Is authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five five one dot zero seven one. Consultation with attorney, five five one dot zero seven two. Deliberations about real property, five five one dot zero seven three. Deliberations about gifts and donations, five five one dot zero seven four. Personnel matters, five five one dot zero seven six. Deliberations about security devices, five five one dot zero seven eight seven dot zero eight seven, excuse me. Economic development, tonight we are entering into uh, executive session on two items. The first item, section five five one dot zero seven four. Personnel matters, deliberate on the employment, evaluation duties and discipline of a public officer or employee, the city manager. Uh, and item two, nine two, five five one dot zero seven six. Deliberations about security devices, city hall security audit. We will recess at
Eight thirty-nine.
Eight thirty-nine. Uh, and this council stands in executive session.
We are back from executive session at?
Eleven forty seven.
Eleven forty seven. We are back in our regular scheduled meeting. We will entertain a motion on item ten one, section five five one dot zero seven four personnel matters. Deliberate on the employment evaluation duties and discipline of a public officer or employee, the city manager. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we table this item until our next meeting on January the twenty third.
Very good. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
There's no discussion on table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item ten two five five one dot zero seven six deliberations about security devices. City Hall Security Audit. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we proceed with the recommendations made by our staff with regard to enhancing our security systems or devices.
At City Hall?
At City Properties.
City Properties. Is there a second?
A second.
Let the record reflect that if there are purchases that need to be made in those upgrades, Mr. Garcia, you would bring those back to council individually for approval. If they are outside of the spending limits set upon you by our charter. Very good. Then if there's no further discussion, I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item eleven adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.